My name is Mayor.
I got deposed by the DCI, by the Sheriff's Office.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 6, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. To Mayor, we'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr. Baranko.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
McCurus.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
All right, our invoker unfortunately just canceled on us, so I'll give the invocation tonight. So if you stand for that and then stay standing, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance immediately after. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity again to gather in these chambers and conduct the business of this great city. Oh, we thank you for the people at this dais who give tirelessly their time, their talents, their Tuesday nights to serve this community. May you bless the decisions that are made tonight, the words that are said. May we bring you honor and glory through it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is where I usually thank the invoker, so thank you, Paul, for doing that. Go to the consent agenda, item four, look for a motion there or any changes.
Move of approval. Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there, council? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. And then, playing along at home, we skip way ahead to item eighty-seven, which is where we'll approve our regular agenda. Need a motion there.
Move of approval, Jensen.
Second call.
All right, motion by Jensen and seconded by Cole. Any discussion on the motion approved? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero as well. Now, before we go on with our agenda, just want to review public input for tonight and how that will work. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. And during general public input, at the end of the meeting, comments will be three minutes per person and on topics we didn't discuss earlier in the evening. So with that being said, we'll move on to item eighty-eight, please.
Eighty-eight is a new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license and 2023 retail wine license for Hollywood Style, 3301 East 26th Street, Suite 113. Item eighty-nine is transfer of 2022 retail wine license for Black Cat Art Studio, 1412 West 41st Street, to Black Cat Art Studio, 2101 West 41st Street, Suite 43. Item ninety is renewal of 2023 retail wine license for Black Cat Art Studio, 2101 West 41st Street, Suite 43. Item ninety-one is various retail liquor, packaged liquor, package delivery, and retail wine license renewals for 2023 to be operated at various locations in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, identified as Exhibit E.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items eighty-eight through ninety-one. And I want to mention that item ninety-one is the exhibit of renewals that have failed an underage sting in the last renewal period. So many of the applicants are here. I haven't confirmed that all of them are here, but I've seen many of them in the audience, so.
Got it, thank you. All right, anyone from the public here to speak on eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, or ninety-one? All right, council, you have any questions for Jamie on these items? Counselor Starr?
Yes, Jamie. I don't have the list of the folks who failed, but I'd probably want to hear from each of them.
Okay. Do you want me to just call them up in the order? I've got them on my list, okay.
That'd be great. Are we to that point, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Do you want to motion first?
Do we want, doesn't matter. We can hear from you first, that's fine.
Okay. All right, the first one on the list is Aldi Foods, and I have Jacob Rhodes.
Jacob, good evening.
Good evening.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, give me the idea of what happened.
Well, as I understand, I just, I'm just new to this area. Employee sold alcohol to an underage person, and then we were notified shortly thereafter.
How do we make it not happen again, I guess is the cut to the chase?
Immediately, the next following day, we, the store held a store manager meeting with all of the managers to address the incident, also to review the policy, our national sales policy for liquor. We also then scheduled an entire store meeting to, again, review and then discuss the incident and review the policy for selling liquor. And then, the affected employee, her name was Mercy, we, we had the access to turn their approval off and make it manager approval. So we turned her approval for selling liquor off, and now she's required to have a manager approve all liquor sales. And then, to kind of extend that a little bit, with all new employees for the first thirty days that they're employed with us, we also turn off their liquor sales capabilities without manager approval. And then, after they've kind of gone through the process, then we now will turn that on for them to make sure that they understand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is Shopping Cart North. I did not have anybody check in with me on that one, but the owner is Shaw.
Don't see anyone shopping cart here.
Okay, and the next one would be Shopping Cart Northeast, and Danny is here.
I'm the general manager of Shopping Cart Northeast, and the person who sold was actually the general manager of that store. It was busy. He sold to a minor, and the minor had a red ID. We don't accept red IDs from anybody, no matter if they're old enough or not. We do not accept red IDs. He had worked all day, was called in on that day, and took it. He was fired on the spot. No longer works for us.
Answered my question, thank you.
That's our policy, so.
Do you know anything about the other store?
North Minnesota is not owned by us anymore.
Gotcha, thank you.
Can't answer the question.
All right, thank you.
Anything? Thank you.
Next on the list would be Hy-Vee Food Store, number one, and I have Isaac Tinklinberg.
Evening, Isaac.
Good evening, my name is Isaac. I am the Wine and Spirits Manager at the 26th and Sycamore Hy-Vee. The employee who was faulted for selling to the underage person at our location had a momentary lapse of judgment. They were not paying attention. It was just a situation that I believe was an anomaly. The employee has since been terminated, and we are reinforcing our policies that we have for anybody who is hired to our location. Reinforcing the, or reemphasizing the policy we have to make sure that anybody who's over the age of eighteen, who is given the privileges to sell alcohol, is rigorously tested and made sure that they know the policies and the rules and regulations of the state of South Dakota, and making sure that everybody who is currently in the store also reviews policy and current South Dakota state law.
Paul, questions, council, for Counselor Starr?
Yeah, give me an, how can they get past your system? Because your system is pretty, seems to be pretty foolproof in the past when I've had it described to me.
Yes, so we have a system that verifies the validity of the identification when we scan the ID. However, there are manager approval codes that allow us to override that for someone who is, say, sixty or above. Anybody under the age of forty is asked, or anybody who appears to be under the age of forty is, our policy is to inquire for an ID on that part, and that employee did not follow those policies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Baranko?
So was this in the, I shop at your location all the time. Is this in the liquor store section, or was this in the main store?
It was in the Wine and Spirits Department.
Oh, it was Wine Spirits, okay.
Other questions? Okay, Isaac, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got Sunshine Food Market, Brian Monahan, and Nick Jensen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am fairly new to this position, but after hearing about this, we've done quite a few things since the incident has occurred. We've implemented new technology into the systems, where you have to scan the IDs before. We did not have that going on. We've also retrained all of our current employees, and also have a separate training sheet now going forward, just on how to read IDs and validate them.
Any questions for folks from Sunshine? All right, thank you, sir.
Indian Bazaar, I did not have anybody check in with me.
Oh, looks nice here, come on up, sir. What was your business?
Indian Bazaar.
Indian Bazaar, excuse me, okay. Questions, or you want to explain?
A new employee basically forgot to ask for an ID.
Questions, Counselor Starr?
What is your system to check for IDs, or is there anything electronic or as part of the register?
The whole system did not require ID to be scanned, but that got updated. Now, anytime alcohol, tobacco product is scanned, it will require an ID to be scanned too, and we stopped selling alcohol and tobacco product at that location.
Thank you.
Other questions for Indian Bazaar folks here? All right, thank you, sir.
Got South Dakota Veterans Alliance, Brian Phelps.
Brian, good evening.
Hey, good evening, thanks you for having me come in this evening. With the alliance, you have to trust me, we are very sincere about our alcohol compliance, doing that. We have the big event center, the gun range that has breathalyzers back there, all the events that we came in. Our point-of-sale system does not allow us to scan IDs or allow us to enter birth dates. So we've gone a different route in that we have certified bartenders that work for us that pass the R-Serve class that identifies, how do I recognize a fake or a false ID? We also mandatory if anybody under the age of forty is checked, their ID is checked by a certified bartender. We have also acquired independent ID scanners that we use for all of our events where every client comes in, where we have a thousand customers come in, every ID is scanned, and they will tell us whether they're allowed to purchase alcohol, and then we also use wristbands to tag anybody that is able to purchase alcohol from us. And we also spend, take the first day of every month and reemphasize to all of our certified bartenders and all of our staff the importance of making sure we do not have underaged service going on. And the individual who violated the program was one that we were trying to help through some personal and some mental issues. He took it upon himself to go behind the bar when our bartender, certified bartender, was retrieving food for a customer and did it all by himself. He was terminated and has unfortunately gone through some more rough parts in his life. So, any questions for me at all?
Questions for Mr. Phelps there? All right, thanks, Brian.
Good Spirits Wine and Liquor, Heather Taylor.
Hi, Heather.
Hi, how are you? We had a young man who was working the front register on his own without our second. They were loading the cooler. He actually ID'd the individual, took the ID, and decided to do the math in his head instead of scanning the ID or punching the birth date into our system. So all of our staff is now required to either scan or punch a birth date regardless of the age of our customer, which some older people don't like, but we're on those front lines, and we know how important it is for us to do our jobs and do them well. We have a very good track record. This individual called me immediately and felt terrible, and we put him on a two-week probation, and he decided to leave our company. Going forward, employees typically have always been terminated, but Matthew is a little bit of a special employee to us, and so we gave him the ability to be on probation. All of our current staff that we have are now TAM trained, they're certified, they all have licenses that allow them to know what the laws are, and we have very specific rules in place going forward, so.
Thanks, Heather. Other questions for Heather from the council? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Smoking Deals, I don't have a contact name.
Smoking Deals, anyone from Smoking Deals here? No?
Last one, at least, Minerva's, Ken Bishore, or Chuck Geritz?
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Chuck Geritz, General Manager, Minerva's. We had a new bartender, was, his second night at a job, and the other one that was training him went back, stock wine, and they came in, sat at the bar. He, I didn't ID him, served him a beer, and then as he did it, he came around the corner to me and said, "I think I just served an underage kid." And so, our policy, I didn't, we didn't terminate him. We put him through more training with the other bartenders there and stuff, so, you know, our policy is if you're under forty, ID, but, and that's kind of where we're at, unfortunately. It kind of snuck through the crack on our training aspect of it, and we didn't have somebody with him the whole time, so.
Thanks, Chuck. Questions for Chuck? All right, thank you, sir. Is that it, Jamie? All right, all right, so you've heard from them. We can get further questions for Jamie?
Nope, just finished with a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
The first one, I want to move to defer Shopping Cart North and Smoking Deal to December twentieth and ask them to appear that evening.
Second.
Okay, motion by Starr, seconded by Sale, to defer those two applicants to the December twenty meeting. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's vote on that motion, defer, please.
Councilmembers Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Another motion?
I would move to approve the remaining applicants in Exhibit, Exhibit E.
Second.
All right, motion by Starr, seconded by, let's see, I'll give that to Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. And we'll need one final motion for eighty-eight to ninety, I believe.
I'll, yep, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve eighty-eight through ninety.
Second.
Starr.
All right, motion by Knightzert, seconded by Starr, to approve those three items. Any discussion? All right, we'll vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item ninety-two is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East Thirty-third Street and west of South Canyon Avenue, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the C and Conservation District, number 17281, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant Savannah Development LLP, Brian Jackson.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Brian Jackson, representing Savannah Development. It's located north of East Thirty-third Street and east of South Veterans Parkway. It's about 1.12 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to rezone this drainage area to conservation, and then that will be transferred over to the city as part of this large detention area.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on item ninety-two? Council, any questions for Jason on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr?
Why do we want it?
We want it to be able to maintain it. As you can see, kind of on the west of this, you see that large detention area. Typically, when we have those private developers and have their own drainage areas, they sometimes aren't maintained up to our city standards, and that will affect kind of the drainage coming from the east to our main regional detention pond. So we like to own those and just maintain them with our, with our own city staff to be able to make sure they're, they're working effectively.
Thank you.
Any other questions here? All right, look for a motion.
Move of approval.
Second, McCurus.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by McCurus. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item ninety-three is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4705 West Botel Place, from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 17282, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant Veldhouse Construction Incorporated, Caleb Veldhouse.
The applicanting owner here is Caleb Veldhouse, excuse me. It's located west of I-29 and north of West Twenty-sixth Street. It's about .4 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking to construct a single-family home on the lot.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on ninety-three? Questions for Jason on this one, council?
Move to approve, Knightzert.
Second call.
All right, motion by Knightzert, seconded by Cole, to approve that. Any discussion, council? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item ninety-four is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East Madison Street and west of Veterans Parkway, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, O Office, and the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts, to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, LW Live Work, Zero Office, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts, number 17285, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant Foss Fields Development Company, Joel Engel.
The applicanting owner here is Joel Engel. It's located west of Veterans Parkway and south of West Madison Street. It's about thirty-eight acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to construct a commercial office and multifamily residential development.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on ninety-four tonight? Questions on this one, council, for Jason?
Move of approval.
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole, to approve. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item ninety-five is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1200 East Seventy-seventh Street, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the O Office District, number 17305, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant McDaniel Properties LLC, Ross McDaniel.
The applicanting owner here is Ross McDaniel. It's located north of East Seventy-seventh Street and west of South Cliff Avenue. It's about .17 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to construct a parking lot addition for his existing medical clinic.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on ninety-five? Council, you got any questions here?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor, Knightzert, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, that was this, do you know if this was going to be like a flagpole for an access or something, for development?
We've seen a couple of zonings out here. It's, it was an access for the church to the north area, and now that church has started kind of selling off some of their property, so that's why it was zoned RS when that church came in there, to give them an access on Seventy-seventh Street, but.
No longer necessary?
No longer needed, yeah.
Move of approval, Knightzert.
Second.
Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Baranko. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Next item.
Item ninety-six is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter Thirty-seven Taxation. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, Dustin?
Good evening. Good evening, council, Mayor Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Tonight's ordinance would amend our ordinances related to the Main Street Business Improvement District. The bid has been in place since 1989 and generates revenue via a special assessment on downtown properties each year to fund a variety of projects downtown. The funds are distributed to Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated and has been used for projects including marketing, streetscape improvements, public space cleaning and maintenance, events and promotions, district advocacy, as well as economic development, among other things over the years. You will see two sections being requested for amendment as part of the ordinance tonight. First would be a name change, changing the name of the bid from Main Street Sioux Falls Business Improvement District to Downtown Sioux Falls Business Improvement District. Main Street Sioux Falls was the original organization and kind of some old terminology, so we're just updating that. The second change is related to the rate methodology of the ordinance to support the assessment for the Business Improvement District. That would go to support the bid growth plan that Downtown Sioux Falls has prepared and shared with the property owners. Notice was published in the paper for this hearing on October twenty-first and twenty-eighth. A physical notice was mailed to all the property owners on November third. There was also a Business Improvement District Board that's appointed by the mayor that reviewed the bid growth plan, as well as these amendments. That board met on August twelfth, and notice was sent to all of the property owners on August first of that meeting, and that board recommended unanimous approval of these changes. So, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Bachelor, president of Downtown Sioux Falls, and he's going to go through the presentation here tonight.
Right, thanks, Dustin. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Joe Bachelor, president of Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated. All right. So, it's twenty thirty-five. What kind of downtown do we want to have? Well, here's a vision for you. Downtown is densely populated with residents, visitors, and with a talented workforce. It's a place of opportunity for all walks of life, a place where dreams can be made. Downtown is urban, but there's ample greenery and public spaces of the highest quality design. It has a complete riverfront that engages and connects people with downtown's most valuable natural amenity, the river. Downtown is the cultural and economic hub of the region, where arts, entertainment, and commerce collide. Downtown is a place that is easy to access and easy to navigate within. It offers a variety of mobility modes, making Downtown Sioux Falls the most walkable downtown in the United States. This potent and well-balanced approach makes Downtown Sioux Falls one of the most beautiful, engaging, and fun downtowns in the country. That's a downtown we can have, and we really don't have that far to go, but it takes investment and it takes stewardship. But what if we don't address the issues and the opportunities in the next few years? There are so many downtowns that would love to be in the position that we are, that may have been in that position just a few short years ago, that are now dealing with high vacancy rates, dealing with a dwindling workforce, dealing with homeless encampments. There are downtowns that would love to have the situation that we're in. It's property owners that can really help make downtown reach its full potential. We've made great progress thus far, but there is still a long way to go. We've got more visitors, more residents, more employees, more lower vacancies and higher property values in the last ten years, thanks in large part to the investment that property owners have made, that has allowed DTSF to provide the essential services that have spotlighted downtown and make it the wonderful urban center that it is. So, I believe our best days could be ahead of us, and I want to ensure that that happens, that we write that future together. Now, I've presented in front of you a couple of times, if you recall, we've got a couple of peer cities, Fargo and Rapid City, and they are outpacing us with the amount of investment that they are putting into their downtowns. When you look at it on a per-acre basis, Fargo is almost fourfold of what we're putting into our downtown. We're providing just as many services as they are, if not more sometimes, but we are being fully utilized, the DTSF staff. So, we have a little bit of a growing pain right now that we need to try to overcome. So, what does that look like? Ambassadors, maintenance, marketing, events, retail recruitment, and wayfinding, these are the things that we heard from the stakeholders that they want to see in Downtown Sioux Falls, that they want to see DTSF deliver. And we surveyed over a hundred stakeholders, property owners, business owners, residents. We held small group meetings, we held interviews, going back to last summer, and we've been working since then to develop the bid growth plan, and and this is this is the result of that. These are the six areas where DTSF has been charged to lean into. And what's interesting is that this dovetails perfectly with what the community has prioritized as issues and opportunities through the outreach efforts of the twenty thirty-five downtown plan. So, this allows us to get a jumpstart on that plan. So, how do we get there from here? We remove the cap, we replace it with a second, lower-tier, and that will help provide DTSF an investment from the property owners to address those issues and opportunities, to make us a well-positioned organization and a thriving downtown in twenty thirty-five. So, how did we get here? We've been conducting outreach. When the plan was finalized by the bid steering committee, we posted that on the DTSF website in June, we sent out mailers to the capped property owners, we followed that up with emails to the capped property owners, we held a public meeting in late July as well. After that, property owners received another notice for the bid board meeting on August twelfth. They had an opportunity to come and weigh in on the bid growth plan at that time. There was the informational meeting in mid-September, and then, as Mr. Powers referenced, the property owners were notified one more time last month for for the first and second reading here tonight. So, that's how we got here. We had some great guidance along the way, some some very committed and valued community members were part of our steering committee, and I I do want to say, you know, we we have received a a request from some property, a particular property owner for more information, and we've met with them, we've explained the process that we went through, I think you'll probably be hearing from them tonight. I want you to understand the process that we've gone through and how we got here where we're at. So, with that, in closing, downtown is the part of the city that belongs to everyone. It doesn't matter where you find your home, downtown is yours. Investing in downtown is the best way to benefit all the citizens at once. The buildings, the streets, the cafes, the public spaces, the social interactions that these places engender, it resolutely casts the image of Sioux Falls. Our reputation rests in large part on the environment, the economy, the experience, and the equity that downtown provides. If downtown doesn't look good, the city doesn't look good. People may not want to move here, it may be harder to build community pride, but a beautiful and vibrant downtown in contrast is the rising tide that can lift all ships. A little bit of great downtown can help push the entire city to become exceptional. We've seen good results already. We need to keep that momentum going. This is the place to begin. Downtown is not just the cradle of our community. Downtown is the future of Sioux Falls. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Joe. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight, come on up. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Delia Drewley, and I'm an attorney with Evans Hagan Art here in town. I'm here on behalf of Raven Industries to address this, counsel, regarding this proposed ordinance. Raven's internal attorney had a conflict, so I'm here with Dustin Baderman to give you a little background about Raven's unique position in downtown Sioux Falls and request an opportunity to have more time to work directly with the Business Improvement District Board, Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated, and the other stakeholders to amend the proposed ordinance to include assessment zoning maps. So, with that said, we'd ask that the council either table consideration of the ordinance until the next meeting to allow us some time to come up with some proposed language, or allow us an opportunity to present a proposed amendment before the assessment period occurs, should this ordinance pass the council. We, it's important to recognize, first of all, that we greatly appreciate what the Business Improvement District has done for downtown Sioux Falls. Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated has done wonderful work, and Raven is appreciative of that. But I'm here to address some of the concerns that they have about whether they'll be paying a fair and equitable assessment that recognizes their distinct character in downtown Sioux Falls. We don't oppose the removal of the cap, but we have some concerns about the precedent that it could potentially set. It would amount to a three hundred and seventy-seven percent increase in Raven's current assessment. We don't know what that number would be in the future, especially with our potential need to expand and rising property values in downtown Sioux Falls. Raven's accountable to its shareholders and its board, and it's harder to justify its presence in downtown Sioux Falls as expensive it's increased relative to the benefit they get. Now, Raven is zoned as RE-six, retail and wholesale, but you can't walk into Raven and buy anything. The increased foot traffic in downtown Sioux Falls that a lot of these initiatives are aimed at doesn't benefit Raven as directly as it does the other stakeholders. Seems like the objectives of the Business Improvement District are aimed at the retail experience and at attracting visitors to downtown Sioux Falls, which are all laudable goals, but they provide limited benefit to Raven. What Raven does is use its building in downtown for industrial and manufacturing purposes. They have state-of-the-art laboratories, environmental testing facilities, and when I was there this afternoon, I saw a Faraday cage in the basement of their building. It's incredible what they're doing down there. They're asking for consideration of an amendment to this ordinance to enable Raven to better fulfill its motto, feeding the world through technology. Raven brings a highly-paid workforce to Sioux Falls and keeps the best and brightest engineers here in South Dakota, where the focus is on ag technology. And we have three hundred and eighty-five employees located in downtown Sioux Falls, which amounts to a lot of incidental spending in the downtown area. This ordinance and the proposed removal of the cap is also about what Sioux Falls wants to be. You know, we, I heard references to twenty thirty-five, and what Raven is asking for is for the council to consider whether that vision includes additional technology companies like Raven, who maybe aren't a perfect fit for a retailer-wholesaler-type designation, but do provide value to downtown Sioux Falls in terms of the workforce they attract and, you know, showing that Sioux Falls is a center of innovation and advancement in agriculture. Fargo is one of the cities that was used as an example, and they have Microsoft. We want to attract tech companies and others that aren't retailer-wholesalers to downtown Sioux Falls. We need our property assessments to reflect the real character of those companies and what they do. We have the potential to be a tech corridor here. And Raven wants to be a good partner with the city of Sioux Falls and with the Business Improvement District. And, you know, they've worked with the city in the past on projects such as the Art of Dreams, Levitt Parking, and assorted other charitable endeavors. And I also want to be clear that Raven recognizes that this is the second reading and that the Downtown Sioux Falls Board has gone through an extensive effort to perform outreach to property owners. Unfortunately, Raven didn't get the notice due to the merger until November twenty-eighth. It was sent to Raven's general mailbox rather than to the attention of legal counsel or the facilities management, so there was a bit of confusion in participating in the process. Soon as they learned of it, they reached out and attempted to remedy that issue. I see my time has expired.
I'll give you thirty more seconds if you want to wrap it up.
Thank you. So, we're here asking for one of two things. We'd either like the council to delay consideration of this ordinance until the next meeting so we can work with the relevant stakeholders to look at including proposed language regarding assessment zoning maps, which is a possibility that we have spoken with Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated about. Or if should the ordinance pass as written, we would like an opportunity to come before the council proposing an additional ordinance that includes assessment zoning maps and modifies the proposed ordinance yet again.
Okay, thanks, Delia.
Thank you.
Did I say your name right? Delia? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight, come on up?
All right, so I'm going to have to do some bashing here. Let's get in reality. Downtown is not for everybody. Downtown is not for your poor people, it's not for your middle class, it's for your rich. Yes, we do, when he says we we don't need homeless encampments, yes, we do. We need beer and wine drinkers to socialize, right? So, we need places where the middle-class low-end people can pay five hundred dollars downtown versus five thousand dollars for a condominium, for rent. I don't care what they do downtown, but you need to be careful on your freedom of speech because downtown is not for everybody. And to live downtown, it's not for your middle-class, average American citizen that's getting fifteen to twenty-three dollars an hour. Affordable housing is what we need down there, and not affordable housing is what the city says of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and under. It's not affordable housing. So, yes, we do need them. So, when I tell the transits, I say, go downtown, which is science, and go panhandle, because the rich people needs to start giving more to the poor people, and that's what they do on Phillips Avenue every day, because I tell them to do that. So, we can't just have our people, our clientele, and push out everybody else because we want to make downtown special. This is not the Kardashian world.
This this is about a bid and not gentrification.
So, and and and, I understand that, but Dan, when I come back and redo what he says, then you want to stop me. So, Dan, you need to stop people when they say downtown's for everybody. Number two, don't stop me when I say this. Downtown is not the most walkable place in the United States, so correct him on that before I get started on him with that. So, I understand that my way of speaking, you don't like it because it's downtown and it's your class of people.
Because it's not on topic, so speak to the topic.
So, you need to stop him.
Bid. All right, Stu, come on up. We're talking about the bid here, just as a reminder.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, my name's Stuart Norberg, representing Norberg Paints. I guess I'm the the oldest, not the oldest person maybe in here, but probably close to it, but the oldest business. So, eighteen eighty-five is when we started our store downtown here, and so we've been downtown the whole time. Not in objection with what downtown has done. Think it's great, it's improvement. Mr. Bachelor, thank you and your team for your efforts. My concern is this, is that we've paid our portion as far as over the years since it started at our store down on Fourteenth Street. We've really never gotten any benefits from that, and I'm part of a team player, no problem with that, but as far as when I'm looking through the list of things that is being proposed, they're talking as far as snow removal for the downtown area, and if we're being assessed that, I'm not looking for someone to remove snow from my parking lot or my sidewalk, but if you're going to include and expand this, it needs to look that everybody gets benefited from that. And for my business, we really don't get any benefit. I don't mind paying a thousand dollars, but if it starts escalating up, I do get concerns. And then, as I start looking through it and the things that are being brought into it as far as the security, you've looked at it with homeless, with those different things in our business and in our corner on Fourteenth and Second, and I speak with Sunshine, and they may come up and also introduce, but there are concerns that I think as you start bringing in some of the things that they want to do, that the city as a whole also needs to put ordinances. So, as far as panhandlers or peddlers, if you're going to hire three people to kind of be the gatekeepers or whatever, there needs to be an ordinance that when they come up there, that they are breaking a law. So, if there's not a law throughout Sioux Falls, something needs to be put in place so that when these people do their job, and who's going to enforce that, if it's a police officer, my understanding is the only time that that law gets broken is when they stop traffic or do anything there. So, to me, all the things that are being presented, they're good, they're expanding Sioux Falls, they're making the downtown more presentable, but as you're taxing this larger group, everybody needs to be benefited from that, and I think that things have to have that long-term view as far as if you're trying to enforce those things or do those things, make sure that you've given the ammunition for those people to do their job. As you expand into the bigger area, the bigger circle, I guess the other part is that as you're looking the bigger picture, you know, I I see the area that it's going up by Falls Park, and as we go into the the new expanded park version, you know, as that gets included into that, that we're having plenty of built-in benefits with that, and that security-wise, and and the town as it improves more on the east bank, everybody gets the benefit. So, I guess as I look at it, I've participated in it since day one, and not complaining that I haven't, but as you expand it to all these other places, make sure that the benefit isn't just Christmas lights on Main Street or Phillips, but that as it moves out, that, and I know that's a bigger cost. I know that's a bigger bigger job for you guys and a bigger task, but I think there just needs to be some longer-term looking, and if you're not going to extend those benefits to those perimeter ones, then maybe that those boundaries need to be changed. So, that's all I have to say for my my part, so.
Thanks, Stu. Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak on this, come on up? Good evening.
Mike from Zeris of Sioux Falls, I just, I'm in support of this. I mean, I'm a big promoter promoting downtown. I think Joe and his group has done a good job. I actually would like to see more of this around town as well, but I think I would I would love to have you guys delay it for one week. I would love, I would love to see what Raven has in plans for us and for their future because I think they've been a, they're a historic company, they've been, they're one of the biggest property owners downtown, and they have one of the most historic sites downtown. I think they should be part of this and part of this conversation. If they have issues with the proposal, I think you take the lead on it and and see what they have to say. I think I wouldn't mind just having the discussion again next week, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anyone else like to speak on this, come on up? Good evening.
I am Brian Monahan with Sunshine Foods, nice to see y'all. You know, we've been part of downtown for since nineteen sixty-seven and before that too, and we just are, you know, nothing that the, nothing that the bid has done downtown Sioux Falls, you know, I don't, I feel like you guys have done a great job over the years improving downtown, and I'm very appreciative of it with the housing and all that stuff. But I, you know, with this bid growth plan, I'm just feeling like we're left out as, you know, we're the southeast corner part of the whole downtown, and wouldn't it be nice to have, you know, planters out there to, you know, welcoming people into downtown Sioux Falls or have Christmas lights? Sioux Falls or have Christmas lights up and, you know, so on that aspect, I feel like we're getting lost in that corner of the downtown area, and I just wish that, you know, more could be done to, you know, that we're, we're paying for this, we're being part of this. I have no problem, you know, putting money into this because I, like I said, I believe in downtown. I think you guys are doing great with this. I just wish that we had a better chance to partake in some of the stuff that they do, so thank you.
Okay, Brian. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right. Paul Vakimbo being down will open up questions to Joe or to Dustin or anyone else, Councillor Neitz or to Councillor Selberg.
Well, so I guess question for Joe. First being, I don't know if there's anything we need to do legislatively, but you heard the commentary, and so I, I assume that you could meet with, you know, any entities and talk about what you can do around the edges. I don't know enough about everything you do to know, you know, any of the details, but I trust you'll, you'll take care of those discussions. My actual question, and you can comment on that, but my question is, would there be an objection to delaying a week? Is there, is there any, you know, timeline as far as assessments and deadlines for taxation?
So if, once this were to be approved, the assessment actually would not take place until, I think, property owners would be notified October of 2023. So we do have some runway. The, the rub, though, is just the planning and making sure, because we front-load all of our services, and then we get reimbursed on the back end. And so the rub is just making sure that we have an adequate plan in place and that we have enough time to execute that plan. I would not be opposed to deferment at this point to let some of these conversations play out. I think that the people that you heard from bring up some valid points. You know, I, I, one thing that I do want to say is that this assessment formula has been in place for 33 years. A lot of business improvement districts renew sometimes every two years. So that's a really long time. We have a number of flies in the ointment, if you will, and our, what the effort here tonight is, is to take care of the biggest fly in the ointment. But, you know, we, like I said, I think we heard some, some valid points that we heard from some, some property owners downtown, and I would like to just make sure that there is total understanding with what the effort is, and, you know, we don't, we don't want any surprises, so I think that that's a reasonable request.
So related to that, I mean, it, so this, the Raven, this is the first time that I'm, that I'm hearing this, and so I always like to have all of the information, which is why I asked whether or not time was of the essence for any reason, because I'm definitely in support of doing something, but it's an interesting perspective, and I don't take a position on it without learning about it. But any discussions that you have had with Raven, did this come up where you had any, have you had time to vet the idea? I mean, I know you've been working, you've got your formula, and you've gone all this way, and now there's maybe a new proposal, but have you had any discussions?
You know, I made a couple of attempts to, to reach out to my main point of contact with Raven, but really was not able to get a meeting until yesterday, actually. So felt like we had a good productive discussion. You know, they've got some concerns with, you know, the, with what is going on around their property, and I think that the bid growth plan can actually help address a lot of the issues that they're experiencing. So I think that taking some time to pause and, you know, to understand how that would look moving forward, I think would be, would be prudent. I just, one thing I want to get on the record is that, you know, Raven, Sunshine, Norberg, all these businesses, they are and have been a part of the downtown community for a long time. They are very highly valued members of the downtown community, and DTSF wants to have a strong partnership with all of them. So, you know, I just want to make that known that, you know, these, these are important partnerships for DTSF.
Absolutely, and I, and I, maybe we don't change anything, but just hearing what I'm hearing, I, I guess I would lean towards wanting to defer a week just so you could at least have a conversation and we could be at briefed and find out whether there's any suggested change or you come to a conclusion that you shouldn't, but I don't think the discussion would hurt, so that would be my thought. Thanks.
Councillor Selberg.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well, Councillor Neitz, you just pretty much hit everything I was gonna ask you. Pretty much, obviously, the Raven thing's a recent development, so my question was gonna be, what are the conversations been and what are your thoughts on their requests? So you might have just answered that as well, but yeah, it seemed to me with the recent developments, a delay even, maybe even a couple of weeks wouldn't be a bad thing. It doesn't look like there's a big rush to this, so unless you have anything else to add, I'm pretty much asking what he did.
I think we pretty much covered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions, Council here? All right, look for a motion then, if there's one to be made.
Go ahead, Megan.
I'll make a motion to defer this item until the meeting of December 13th. That's one week.
Okay, we have a second for that? Second, Starr. All right. We want some discussion on that. I see some table talk going on, so Councillor Sale.
Yeah, I, I just have to make this observation as, you know, I've had the opportunity to transfer a lot of business from one person to the other, and we always make sure the emails and mails are appropriately handled, and some of them are quite urgent, so there's always somebody responsible. And if, if the new regime at Raven is not getting them and didn't get anything and didn't reach out to anybody till Friday, I would certainly look at your procedures to make sure that whoever was responsible is held accountable for this. I will say, in long time, Raven has been an integral part of downtown, has served, their people have served on numerous boards. They've done great things for us in Sioux Falls, and I wouldn't expect them after observation to back away from any commitment that the rest of downtown is going to take on. So even though I will support a deferment, I will say that I, unless somebody enlightens me, I won't support any amendments to lower. It's not a lot of money that we're talking about. And as far as broadening the scope of what downtown Sioux Falls does to all quadrants that might feel a little underappreciated, I think downtown Sioux Falls, if this passes, is pretty much gonna be under a microscope to pick up their game to everybody and treat them the same. But we all know that even though we all pay the taxes, we don't get treated exactly equal because there's different dynamics. So I would encourage this council to vote for a one-week deferment and would hope that everybody would have time to listen to the outreach that's gonna come from downtown Sioux Falls and from Raven in this next week.
All right. Thank you, Councillor. Other discussion on the motion to defer a week? Councillor Neitz, here?
We're just having a little discussion over here. Maybe Joe is the best one, I'm not sure, or, or if somebody else is. Is one week enough, or should we do two? I can, I'm kinda getting it too.
I can clear my calendar to make this work. I guess it's kind of, I, I want to make sure that we're, we have the full leadership team from Raven at the table, so I don't know how much time that takes. I guess that'd be a question for them.
Given it's the holiday season and everything else scheduling, I'm gonna make a substitute motion for a two-week deferment to December 20th.
May I briefly?
You sure can, yeah.
Thank you. Two weeks would be appreciated. I was just retained today, so we've all got a little bit of getting up to speed to do on this matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Substitute motion to defer to December 20 by Councillor Neitz. We got a second for that? Second. All right, second by Selberg. All right, discussion then on that, on the motion to defer to December 20. Councillor McCorris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick comment, I'll be supportive of the deferral. I would appreciate if the council had the opportunity to potentially, if you would meet over the next week, and then potentially we would have a week in advance or we'd receive some of the information of the conversation, so if there is a potential amendment that impacts the financial piece of it, so we could see that a week in advance of what the financial impact potentially could be if an amendment's being offered and so forth, I'd appreciate that, so the first time we're seeing it isn't the night that we're potentially approving it. So I appreciate the two weeks, but hope that we'd get information about a week before we're asked to vote of where we're at in those conversations. So however you can communicate that information to us, that'd be greatly appreciated.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to defer? All right, let's vote on it then, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitz, here?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 97 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and amendments thereto. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Matt.
Evening, Mayor, evening, Council. Matt Tobias, Planning and Development Services. Tonight is the second reading for the adoption of the 2021 Property Maintenance Code. Kinda had a little bit of this up there last time, just kinda giving you a brief overview what the Property Maintenance Code does. Thing I wanted to point out here is, as to date, well, as of December 1st, Property Maintenance Team has conducted 6,681 inspections year-to-date. So they're on the ground, they're doing a lot of work to make sure that the city stays clean, vibrant, and our neighborhoods continue to be investable. So why I have just a few minutes, I want to enlighten you guys just a little bit, some of the things that we deal with, kind of out in the field. Exterior examples, these are violations of property maintenance codes. These are pictures that were taken this year. These are active cases that we are currently working on. Here's a couple examples of some things that we can address through this code, try to get fixed. Interior examples, yeah, the pictures kinda will tell you, these are complaints, so one thing that I want to make very clear is that we are not doing proactive inspections. We're not knocking on doors. These are either a tenant or somebody else that makes us, notifies us of a situation that's going on, most often a tenant. They invite us in, we actually will, will do, conduct the inspection and start working with the property owner to get this fixed. Vegetation's a big one. I, I come to you guys in August with the assessments. We talk about vegetation. Vegetation is actually covered in the International Property Maintenance Code. Here is a good before and after picture. We go out and we identify the violation, and we follow up with it. Sidewalk snow, we're in the thick of it. I had one inspector today do 100 inspections for sidewalk snow just based on that little bit of snow we got. Sea click fix, those things are coming in. This particular was a mailman that was on his walk and was, and we, and that's, it's okay. It's okay. It's fine, but that's just the level of the number of inspections that we can do. Here's a really good one. Sometimes I wanted to show you guys this because some of the bills you'll see come assessment time, they may be a couple hundred dollars, or they could be upwards of $100. Here's a case where our contractor went out and instead of sitting there and chipping at, chipping away at this for hours, they actually put salt and ice melt down, and they come back after and kind of cleared it up, so. And I want to end with a really good one, before and after. The one on the, the house in 2018, we got to it, and it was in really bad shape. Fast forward a couple of years, and that's what it looks like. So just wanted, just wanted to just give you a quick overview of that, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, Matt, thank you. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 97? Councillor, you have any questions for Matt on this? Councillor Jensen?
Is that the house on around 22nd and Spring, 18th and Spring?
Yes.
That's a great, that's remarkable.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Great program.
When the inspector put the notice and order on the door, the door almost fell off. So it's, it's nice every once in a while in our world to see things like this from time to time.
Yeah, that's great. Other questions for Matt here on this? Councillor Neitz, here?
Just in and of itself, is, is mold a violation?
Mold, so here's the thing. So state of South Dakota, we do not have any indoor air quality standards, but what we want to do is what my inspectors, because mold's been a hot topic. It's been coming up more and more and more. We want to find out what's causing the mold. Okay, so whether it be a leaky pipe or something else that we can address.
Well, because as an example, a lot of molds are harmless, but like Staky Botrys mold, which is formed by cellulose, like insulation and sheet rock getting wet, can cause like neurological damage, and it's very bad.
Yep.
So I don't, but of course, you'd have to do testing and all that stuff, so I don't know, like, you know. So if you saw like a bunch of sheet rock wet and molding, is there anything you can do or you would do?
We want to tra, we could, because we want to trace back to what's causing that. Okay, so that's where we could have, if it's a leaky pipe, we can have that in our, in our, that's, that's addressed in our code. So we're always trying to trace back where the mold is coming from.
And you could, you could force correction, for example, on a leaky pipe?
Yes.
Some example?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right, want to make a motion on this item?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Neitz, here.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Neitz, to approve 97. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitz, here?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Move to item 98, please.
Item 98 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinances of the city by establishing an active transportation board. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Fletcher.
Good evening. Fletcher Lake Hawk with Planning and Development Services. I'm here to present what we've been working on for, for quite a while, which is the Active Transportation Board. It will be an advisory board appointed by the mayor to provide guidance and advocate for all things human-powered and non-motorized transportation. What we currently have are two committees, which are just the public emails, staff, and they join the committee. That's the bicycle committee and the pedestrian committee. And then we have a board called PATH, which was adopted by resolution and provides the community safe routes to school. And so what we're doing is, we'll, on the December 13th meeting, we'll see a resolution to rescind the resolutions, creating PATH, as well as what will happen is those three boards will become subcommittees of this Active Transportation Board. And the idea of the Active Transportation Board is to give those three voices one place where they can come and advocate for, for transportation that's human-powered, let's put it that way. And so with this, it'll be things that they'll look at, or the bicycle plan, the pedestrian plan, those are coming up in the next year, safe routes to school, and then something we call Complete Streets 2.0, which is looking at how we create safer transportation network. This is a venue for the public to provide input and advocate for active transportation. So we're looking for public engagement. It's where people who have issues with crosswalks or anything like that can go to, and then they can, the, the board can provide that voice for them to the city council. Their list of official duties include letters of advocacy, so reviewing bicycle route changes, input on safe routes to school and crosswalk improvements, and providing input on complete street reviews. The official duties will also include recommendations to council. That's where we're gonna see the bicycle plan and the pedestrian plan will go before the Active Transportation Board, and they will make a recommendation to city council for hopefully approval. One of the things we've been working through is the composition of the board. Originally, we were looking at doing seven members, just members of the public. What we have now is a nine-member board, three members from each of the subcommittees, the bicycle committee, pedestrian, and PATH, three from the general public, the planning director and the public works director will provide, or their designee will, will be staff advisor, advisement and also direction for the board, and then one representative from the real estate and development world, because a lot of what active transportation does impacts the form of development, so making sure that that community has, has a voice in this as well. Our next steps are on December 13th, looking at second reading, then we have by January 3rd, hopefully this will be in place, and then we'll be trying to get people to apply online and starting that process, and hopefully have a board put together deadline by January 31st, and the mayor making some appointments. So are there any questions for staff at this time?
All right, Fletcher, thank you. See if there's anyone here from the public to speak on this. Not seeing any, so you have questions for Fletcher? Councillor Neitz, here?
I guess just a, just a comment. I guess just a, just a comment. I've been looking at the draft ordinance and been giving, giving input. I've been on, well, as Fletcher noted, being on the bicycle committee is you show up. So I've been attending those meetings for quite a long time, and they've been really enjoyable. The, the one thing that's, and this is very exciting for me. The, one of the things, though, that's been a little bit sometimes limiting is that being on an unofficial board, there's really no authority necessarily to get anything done. So, but things are passed to planning, and they do a good job of bringing it to the city and the other departments and bringing back information. And, but it's been a very robust discussion. But it'll be good to bring, you have these different advocacy groups. You got PATH over here working on the safe routes to school, and you have the bike committee who's really passionate about bicycling, and you have the pedestrian committees. So folding those all under and getting a board with more authority and visibility, I think, is important. The other thing that's really, I think, really good here, too, is that operationally, planning are the, is the group that would be creating bicycle plans, pedestrians. So they're creating the master plans, but the nuts and bolts of how does an intersection get painted, how does a road get dieted, all that stuff happens with public works. And so they being part of the conversation is important. It's important for really planning and public works to be in lockstep. So having both of them there for those meetings, I've encouraged staff from certain departments. And health, they, they're not, they wouldn't be a member, but Shelby from, from health attends these bicycle committee meetings. And the, the health, the community health assessment set active transportation was at the top of the list of reasons why we have obesity problems. And so it's a, it's a big pillar of theirs, and that, and one of their tasks is to look at Complete Streets two-point-oh. But in short, I think it's good because you'll have, you'll have the passion of the people that want to get something done, but you're also going to have the different stakeholders from the city in the room that will be hearing those conversations, and then be, that can help to effectuate that sort of thing. And then we can get that input also as well from the public coming to us as a city council going forward. And just having it be more visible and an official committee makes a statement that it's an important item in our city. So it's a great thing to see coming forward, and I want to thank Fletcher and Sam Trebilcock, notably, who are essentially the board liaisons for, for these committees and are there every month and doing the hard work. So thanks.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Questions for Fletcher from anyone else in the dais here? Okay, and look for a motion then.
Move to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December thirteenth. Knightzert?
Second call.
All right. Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Cole to set a date of second reading for thirteenth of December. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item ninety-nine is a resolution approving the Minnesota Avenue Corridor Phase One land use report. Sponsor is the mayor.
Fletcher?
Hello again. Staff has had an amazing opportunity to continue public engagement with this neighborhood. So we're asking to defer the item to the January seventeenth city council meeting so that we can continue our public engagement process.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? All right, council, you heard Fletcher. Do we want to get a motion to defer?
I so move.
Second. Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen, to defer to January seventeen, twenty-twenty-three. Discussion on that, council. All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Did you say yes? Very quiet.
I'm sorry. McCurris?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right. We all said yes. Eight to zero. Next item.
Item one hundred is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Washington Pavilion Management Incorporated for the management of the Washington Pavilion of Art and Science, Orpheum Theater, and the municipal band. Sponsor is the mayor.
Tom, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is the five-year renewal of the agreement between the city and the Washington Pavilion Management Incorporated. Sean gave a pretty comprehensive review of the relationship and the specifics of the amendments at the November twenty-second, second inter, informational meeting. So I'll keep my comments brief tonight and just to highlight a few of the changes. First of all, the Washington Pavilion Management has managed the pavilion since it opened in nineteen ninety-nine. We added the management of the Orpheum Theater in twenty-nineteen, and then added the management of the municipal band in twenty-twenty-one. It's a fairly comprehensive agreement that has a pavilion management, managing all aspects of the pavilion and Orpheum Theater, from programming to operations. So a few of the major parts of the agreement that changed is better defining the ownership of real and personal property. Essentially, if it's affixed to the building or vital to the operation of the facility, it transfers to the city at the end of the agreement. We updated the insurance requirements to better reflect the current market and what we're doing with the other agreements to make them consistent across the city. Increases the amount on the maintenance expense that the pavilion is responsible for from twenty-five-hundred to five-thousand, and then requires maintenance agreements on those larger items to make sure they're properly maintained, such as the HVAC system, generators, elevators, and such. The agreement also addresses the public facility ticket and convenience fee for use by the facility. It doesn't incorporate the municipal band into the body of the agreement, sets forth the ability for the city to use on a limited basis for city business, and also requires some long-term capital planning for the facility on an annual basis to make sure that we, that we're looking out ahead for the capital needs and maintenance of, of the facility, and then finally updates some other provisions within the agreement to be consistent. So with that, willing to answer any questions, Darren Smith from Washington Pavilion Management is here as well. So otherwise, would ask for your favorable approval.
All right, Tom, thanks. Anyone want to speak on this item from the public? All right, you guys have any questions for Tom or Darren on the agreement? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
I just have one question for Darren Smith.
Welcome, sir. So there, there has been some discussion I have heard, and I think it'd be interesting to hear your perspective on it as it regards your reserve?
Yeah.
Yeah, whether there's a significant reserve balance, and if so, what your strategy is, and whether there's plans in terms of, you know, in, in any event that you have a, and I don't know, I haven't looked at your numbers, but
Yeah.
if you have a significant reserve and, and how you handle that.
Yes. Great question. So let me start by saying this. When I, when I started six and a half years ago in this position, we had about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve. I did the math quick. That would, that would get us about seven days of operating expenses on what at that time was a, about a seven million dollar budget. So that gets your attention, you know. So we've worked very hard intentionally to build a reserve for a variety of reasons. One, while there was some federal assistance during COVID, you know, we wanted to have a reserve fund, a robust reserve fund in place to help us get through times like that. You know, you go back to the recession, oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine, to have the ability to weather those storms. I think a lot of people in the community don't understand that they see us as a quasi-public entity. A lot of people even think we're city employees, or it's a city collective of some kind managing the building. Of course, we're, we're a private management company, a private nonprofit. If we lose money in any year, we're on our own. You know, there's, there's no city financial assistance to bail us out in, in any way, and I think that's something that is really misunderstood. So we have to be prepared like any business for the ups and, more importantly, the downs. The other thing I would say, having a reserve is very important, is one of our goals is to be able to bring in bigger and better Broadway shows, higher-quality art exhibitions. These things are very expensive. There's a fair amount of risk, especially with the Broadway shows. Again, that's not a model I think a lot of people in town understand, which, which I get. But, you know, you're talking, every Broadway show that comes in, there's several hundred thousand dollars in guarantees and risks that we take to bring them in, that we commit to. And, you know, that's before you sell any tickets. Weather can impact those, those events, those risks. So anyway, there's a lot of good reasons that you would want a robust reserve fund. The last thing I would say on that is, again, as a nonprofit organization, every dollar we take in, every dollar that is in reserve ultimately gets reinvested in, in the mission of the organization. So as we continue to do better financially, you will see bigger and better Broadway shows, you will see higher-quality art exhibitions, better science exhibits for the science center, the education program, more scholarships in the education program. All the dollars go back in there. They don't go anywhere else. They don't go out of town, don't go to shareholders, you know, nothing like that.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted you to have the opportunity to add context to the conversation.
Yeah, no, I, thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions tonight on this item? All right, if not, look for a motion here to approve.
Move approval. Second. Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve one hundred. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you. I just, I want to comment, because from the time we, I started on the council, the, the group of the three of us did, we constantly said, turn the Orpheum over to the pavilion. It matches their mission. It matches what they're supposed to be doing. And my gosh, look at what we're doing today. The, the number, you know, Mr. Bachelor has his office there, the number of groups that there, that are there, the, the cleaning, the, the condition of the facility, and being able to do some really great things with the Orpheum. And I hope there are other public facilities that we can work with you or saddle you with in the future. So thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you. I, I wholeheartedly respect the, the mission of the pavilion and what we're doing and what the Washington Pavilion Management Group has done, and they, they fully deserve another renewal of their contract, and, and we look forward to being partners with you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion, council? All right, let's vote on this then, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item one-oh-one is a resolution establishing reporting structures, pay scales, and evaluations for city council-appointed staff. Sponsor is councilmembers Sale and Jensen.
Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For our consideration tonight, it's the annual resolution establishing the council's reporting structure, pay scales, and evaluations for our appointed staff. This resolution reflects a three percent cost-of-living adjustment to each council employee's pay scale. It mirrors the COLA that will be applied to the mayor's appointed mid-management and classified employees. I encourage your support of this motion tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak on this item from the public? Counsel, can we get a motion?
So move.
Second. Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale and Jensen. Discussion on this, council? All right, hearing none, we will vote on it.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item one-oh-two, Notice of Transfer of Appropriations on the Memorandum Dated November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
All right. Any new business, council, tonight? All right, move to public input. Anyone here for public input tonight? Three minutes per person, and on topics we didn't cover earlier.
Sure, Bruce. Now, let me finish what I started. So, you know, people get uncomfortable. But let me tell you something. Downtown does not make up all of Sioux Falls. And the, the rich people got rich off the poor people, okay? I tried to catch sunshine. They ran out of here with their tail between their legs because sunshine, mostly poor people would go there to sunshine. And I told them they need to lower their prices because when they built across the street, the condominiums and that, they went up skyrocketing on their prices. People can't even afford it on their food stamps. So I just talked to Aldi's, and I'm going to be collaborating with Aldi's to put Aldi's in this neighborhood because Aldi's is for the poor people, not the rich people. And when I say rich people, I mean the rich elite people that will not give you the time of day to go eat at McDonald's, okay? They want to go to the nervous. Wait, I, I am telling the people to go Panhandle. So all y'all people that like downtown, I want you to get out of your comfort zone because we don't live in a Kardashian world like downtown. So I want to remind the people, like Mr. Mayor, they got up off his seat because he has a hard time to digest my words. I want them to go and see downtown when they're panhandling for money because I think that people need to start donating to the poor people. And I'm not talking about donate your clothes to Goodwill and then want to kickback and get a ticket for, and then go claiming on your taxes at the end of the year because that's not, really not donating. I'm so sick of downtown. Downtown, downtown. We have a central district council member that I have taken over that neighborhood for two years, and I have done more than our council member sitting here for eight years. And let's talk about that. Eight years. Should I have run and ran for city council? I should have. Look at my track record, what I've done in Pettigrew. What has these council members have done in Pettigrew that I haven't done in two years? And yes, we are going to shut down Lucky Ladies. So if y'all don't vote for it, it will be shut down because this house will be packed. Lucky Ladies, how many times in the making of Lucky Ladies with all that drama? How many times did we get people arrested in Pettigrew and testified in a court system because people, rich people was complaining for fifteen years that they wanted their neighborhood back, and nobody on city council could help these people? Let's talk about that. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about revitalizing Pettigrew and revitalizing, we, your neighborhood, and not having the rich people knocking at Pettigrew's doors wanting to buy out their properties because they want to get rental properties out of the neighborhood, like Mr. Harmon, Grant Harmon does. And I had to stop him for that. Let's talk about the rich people and what they try to do in the poor areas of the town. So when I come up here, if the mayor and nobody likes what I have to say, you can always remove yourself and come back after I've finished talking.
All right. Anyone else here for public input tonight? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
Could I have a point of personal privilege, please?
You sure may.
Tonight, or today, is my daughter Angela's fifteenth birthday. And five years ago, this has been floating around in the bottom of my desk. When she was ten years old, she was here one night and watched the council meeting, and she left me a note of how I should act at the council meeting. So I wanted to share that with you because I know it'll embarrass her as she's probably watching tonight. So that's what we do with fifteen-year-olds. So basically, watch your language. Don't always say yes. Don't raise your voice. Take turns. Do not interrupt. Some things are just the way they are, and there's always a certain amount of time for everything. Pretty profound for a ten-year-old, and even more profound for a freshman in high school now and on her first, fifteenth birthday. So I would not ask you to sing for her, but happy birthday, Angela.
Yeah. Happy birthday. Good advice. All right. Are you for public input? Oh, yeah, coming up then. Good evening.
I've, I've never done this before.
No problem. What's your name, ma'am?
That I remember maybe once for Habitat for Humanity years ago, but I wanted to come tonight and say thank you. Because many times
Ma'am, ma'am, what's your name?
Sheila Hazard, I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks, Sheila.
And do I say where I'm from or?
You don't have to.
Okay. I want to say thank you to everybody for all your hard work that you've done here. Many of you I've worked with over the time. And I know I missed the discussion about the bid assessment and what's going on downtown. And I think we should even do more than just assessing people that are in the downtown area because the downtown is the heart of our city. And I've been to cities that don't have a downtown, and we are really creating a great heart. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Very nice. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? All right. Hearing that, I'll take a motion adjournance, please.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Baranco, is in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.